This conference will now be recorded.
I really want to make sure that we give credit to the Land Use Code Committee because they started working for years on this, and I see some of the members out here. So they started this process, and we just took it from them. And what the work that they did is the backbone of the work that you see in front of you today. We're here. Sure. I want to do the introductions because they don't have a mic though. Rick Preston, Town Board Member. Jason Leon, Town Board Member. Dick Cummings, Town Board Member. Derek Doty, Town Supervisor. Emily Kilmerpleating, Town Board Member.
Peter Rolfe, Deputy Mayor.
Mark Allen, Village Board.
Jackie Kelly, Village Board. I only speak for the town.
I know I did have some clarifying points to make. There had been confusion about what maps to be looking at and what this current proposed law is based upon. So I just want to clarify that the zoning districts and the maps that are mentioned in the proposed law all relate to the base districts established in 2011. So there was some confusion going back to the Land Use Code Committee and what they had proposed and the overlay maps. So those were a basis for our discussions, but it's not where we ended up. So if you're looking at zoning districts, looking at maps, make sure you're always looking at 2011-based districts. Some ground rules for tonight. As Derek mentioned, the board's role tonight is to simply listen and learn. We will not be answering questions or engaging in a dialogue. We, at the very back with Lori, you signed in, and you either signed in to speak or you just signed in in attendance. And Lori has brought that list to Anita, who is the village clerk up front, and the list for people who would like to speak. So Anita will be calling people's names one at a time to come up and speak. When you get up here, we ask that you state your name again for the public record, and one comment per person. And comments will be limited to three minutes, and you will be timed. We ask that you be respectful, you use appropriate language, you listen quietly while others are speaking, and please refrain from conversations amongst each other while other people are speaking. Direct all your comments to this board and not to each other in the audience. For everyone who's joining virtually, Anita, when it's, once everyone in person has been able to speak, then we will open it up to you, and we ask that you raise your hand virtually, and Anita will call on you. You will again be limited to three minutes. Importantly, state your name, your full name for the record. And at the end of all this, we will close the public hearing, but we will leave it, we will be accepting written comments through December 2nd. And the written comments can either go, and we'll put this in the chat, Ldudley@northeleba.org or LPclerk@villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov, depending if it's a village issue or a town issue. If it's gold, then go to Gold Clerks. If you're not sure, go to Gold Clerks. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Anita to read the public hearing notes.
Please take notice that the Town Board of the Town of North Elba and the Village Board of the Village of Lake Placid will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Olympic Conference Center, 2634 Main Street, Lake Placid, New York, to consider a local law to amend the Village of Lake Placid Town of North Elba Land Use Code and to amend the official zoning map. The text of the proposed local law is available for inspection by any interested person at the offices of the village clerk or town clerk, 2693 Main Street, Lake Placid, New York, as well as www.northelba.org and www.villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov. All interested persons are invited to participate in the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. The meeting will be available on GoToMeeting or meet.goto.com/lpv or dial 872-240-3212, code 690687301. Signed, Lori C. Dudley, Town Clerk, and Anita A. Estling, Village Clerk. Our first speaker is Tina Charbonneau.
Good evening. My name is Tina Charbonneau, and I'm a resident of Deerwood. And thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to talk to you folks. Can you hear me now? So I'm a resident in Deerwood, and I did write something down that I'd like to share with you. Currently, I'm thinking that there may be five units within our subdivision that are listed on Airbnb. And right now, there's a single, single listing that creates problems for those of us that are living in the area. So it seems to me that rezoning is a drastic measure for one place that isn't following the rules. I've read a lot about your rules, and I appreciate all of the work that you've done. But one of the things with rules is called enforcement. So if we are going to put rules in for short-term rentals, albeit for the village, or the town, or our rural area, you need to have enforcement. I can't tell you the number of times that I had to call the code enforcement officer and I want to thank, right now I can't remember his name, I want to thank him for responding. But we have to have a system that if a house or a residence doesn't follow the rules that you folks are putting into place, it's not one time $1,000, two times $1,000, three times $1,000. There's got to be a hard and fast rule that says, "Two, in batches, you're out. You lose your ability to host." And that has to be checked out. Who did the Airbnb stated that this house was not to have parties? Who was there to see that there were 12, 15 cars parked out and having a party, and parties to three hours of the morning? Who's there checking that? And if we made a complaint, there was no follow-up. The house, they were allowed to all summer have party after party after party. I have no problem with Airbnb's, I have no problem with rentals and rules. The problem I have is enforcement, and we, the neighbors, the enforcers. It's not fair to us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shelley S. Reynolds.
So I think one of the things that I'm hoping that everybody keeps in mind is that there are plenty of hotels and motels in the area. They're owned by people who live in the area, work in the area, send their kids to school in the area. So I don't think we should be looking at this and pretending like there aren't other options than short-term rentals of homes. So the original purpose of all this, you know better than I do, started six or eight years ago to rein in short-term rentals. And it was because, as Page 5 of the 28 document states, excessive short-term rentals endangered the residential character of the community. Based on Selection 11.4, lodging short-term rentals, there's no limit on the number of lodging term rental permits, there's no limit on the number of days per year, and they do not count in the overall number of short-term rentals. So I do think it's a little bit disingenuous of the board to pretend that we're capping or limiting the number of short-term rentals by passing this 28-page amended document when really what we're doing is expanding from what it was eight years ago when all this started and from what it is currently. In every area, you're expanding, not limiting. I would also like somebody to explain, I know you say you're not going to answer questions, but maybe you could answer this one. What was the objective and equitable criteria that you used to determine that Deerwood, Quail, or Signal Hill should be residential town neighborhoods? Neighborhoods protected from a steady stream of transient strangers coming and going, both human and canine, when neighborhoods like Beach Hill Wilderness Way aren't being considered residential town neighborhoods? Beach Hill Circle and Wilderness Way, they have one very short access road to the whole neighborhood. I live 12 feet, my front step is 12 feet from my neighbor's front step, who are long-term rentals. It drastically changes the character of a neighborhood to have a steady stream of strangers coming and going. So I just, I'd like to know criteria. Is it objective? Is it applied equitably across the board in each of the residential areas? Because the final maps, which by the way were very difficult to find, they are on the town site, they are not on the village site. The legend is not correct on the main portion of the town site. I had to call Darcy. Is that the right name? She was very helpful. She had me click into kind of a whole different area to find the map with the correct maps. Village Residential was not labeled in the, on the main page map, so maybe an oversight, maybe something you could...
Three minutes are up. Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Reynolds, and he'll be followed by Bob Mazwick. Okay. Bob Mazwick followed Mike Sheridan.
Good evening. My name is Bob Mazwick. Hey, Bob, if you'll not for one second, is there a way to use the being in and out of being here? We'll work on it. Go ahead, Bob. I'd like to dovetail on something that Tina said earlier. That is Page 23 of the proposed code, Section 11.6, Complaints, specifically near that A. And I will read you the first line. It says, "The complaining party made contact with the enforcement agency or the designated short-term rental complaint online portal. My personal experience with a problem short-term rental in my neighborhood is that there is a significant disconnect between the contact with the village and having that information making it back to the village department. It just doesn't seem to get there, even when I make other points, basically. This is a short-term rental complaint. It never gets back to the village. I don't think it's appropriate to add language codifying that in this proposed code, but there's certainly sometimes it's easier to interpret and share with the board.
Bob Sheridan?
Mike Sheridan.
Mike Sheridan.
Followed by Owen Rand.
Hello. My name is Mike Sheridan. I live in Deerwood Hills. Firstly, I'd like to thank my neighbor, Kim Shepherd, who actually told me about this meeting. Now, I was given a letter in my mailbox from not the Town Board, and that's where I got this information. I also want to thank everything that you have done to do this, to try to remediate the situation. I very much appreciate your time and volunteer. But if we were to change Deerwood from rural community to town residential, I scrapped to buy that lot in 1998, cleared it myself, built my home, raised the family there. The reason I love Deerwood is because it's in fact is the essential place that it was when I bought it. And if we were to change that to town, then the potential for more building in that area, in that envelope, I think is not, it's just not a good idea. There has to be some form of sustainability or a cap on what can be done in that area. And that's the reason that I live there, is that it's a beautiful neighborhood that is not going to be overrun by more building, more building, more building. It's not that, not the, it's not a fact, not in my backyard, but I just feel that from what I've seen, like for instance, two of the presenters before, we talked about the ordinance of which it talks about noise problems. And when I read that, I couldn't read it all, it was three pages and a bunch of amendments and things. But it really comes down, again, to what was said before. It comes down to enforcement, it comes down to someone being able to address that problem because no matter what, we live in a beautiful place, and people are going to want to come here, and if it could be enforced so that people wouldn't, could adjust to those rules and regulations, that would be great. Because again, there is one place in Deerwood that has been a problem. But personally, and I don't want to like throw stones, but there's a, there's a year round rental, like three lots up from me, that I've lived there for 23 years, and I've not had any problems with it. So, you know, one bad apple spoils a bunch, I don't agree with that, you know? And that's just my main thing. Deerwood's my home, I love it the way it is, and I don't want to see it changed to something different than, than yours. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Owen Rand. And then neither Lori or I could read the signature of the next one, so if you signed in between Owen Rand and Shelley McMillan, then you're next. It's a, it's just like completely a signature.
As she said, my name is Owen Rand. I am a lifelong resident of Deerwood, so I have the privilege of growing up as a kid, seeing that neighborhood about 20% developed. Nowadays, it's 100% developed. 100% development in Deerwood is already much different than it was in the late 90s or 1900s. The proposed zoning, if you change it from rural countryside to town residential, is going to destroy down the road. It won't be a question, it's just when all of these lots will be subdivided and turned into, maybe not vacation rentals, but they will be turned into McKinley Street, they will be turned into very high density areas that we see in Lake Placid. That is not Deerwood Hills. Deerwood Hills was developed to be such a neighborhood that is rural, four-acre lots, one house per lot. If you change it, you're changing everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Shelley McMillan. We are skipping over number seven, but if you have signed up and you either know you are number seven, or we get to the end and you haven't come up, then come on up.
Hello. My name's Sue Ellen McMillan. My husband and I have lived at 164 Deerwood Trail since 1993. Right away, we enjoy the neighborhood's peaceful feeling of being close to nature. Deerwood Hills' location, the size, and the number of neighborhood lots all contribute to its uniquely enjoyable environment. Over the past two summers, unhosed short-term rentals have robbed us of this tranquility. The idea to restrict our neighborhood to hosted short-term rentals is wonderful. But I believe, I do believe it would help minimize the STR negative impacts. However, the change, the idea to change Deerwood Hills from rural countryside to town residential could also create problems. To fix one problem while creating another would be a mistake. If you have the ability to change our neighborhood's district, then I believe you also have the power to cap the number of building permit rights to our existing numbers. Without this cap, there would be serious repercussions. The majority of Deerwood lots could become subdivided. My main concern of upzoning Deerwood from RC to TR is that it would increase the density that can be transferred. For example, in 2002, a nearby property on Berthong Lane was sold. This property did not have a building right, so they could not obtain a building permit. A property owner a few lots over had an extra building right. They didn't need it, they transferred it to the new property owner, who built a home. In changing Deerwood zoning from to TR, we would all have extra density or additional building rights. At the far south end of Quail Lane, there are 300 acres in an area where no additional building rights remain. If future Deerwood owners transferred or sold their building rights to the owner of this property, we could have an entirely new subdivision attached to ours. Note that this 300-acre area will become rural countryside, where unhosed short-term rentals are allowed. These houses would be closer to us than we are to rural roads. So I ask, if Deerwood Hills is changed to town residential, please make sure the density is not increased. Leave the number of building rights as they currently exist. In addition, I have a couple of smaller requests for you to consider.
Just 30 seconds left.
Please add the Town of North Elba to the open fire law. This noise and smell of smoke from fires affects our area as much as the village. This is Local Law 6, Item 8. Also, fireworks, I'm assuming that that's for safety and sound disturbances. Outdoor swimming pools create the same safety and sound disturbances. I request that outdoor swimming pools be prohibited from future short-term rental permits. If there's an unhosed STR property that has, their tenants screaming, "You're out of the business," are louder than music.
You can hand in your comments to us, and we will keep them as part of the record.
I have a page asking property owners in Deerwood who don't want to have additional building rights created to sign this and to add this to your meeting notes. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ann Rast, who will be followed by Ed Fink.
Good morning. My name's Ann Rast. I moved to Deerwood Hills in 2001 as a career person here who no longer can handle careers because this town has changed so much, and there are no more careers in this town except jails, hospitals, and teaching, and we're losing those as well. I could not even afford my place now if I wanted to. The town has changed drastically, and I bought that land for the very purpose of having, not living in suburbia like I grew up. I do not want people half an acre from me, and think that it would be a mistake to add, change the zoning because you're only going to get more houses. And your letter, which I don't know the mysterious person who wrote it, but I want to thank them for writing it because it wasn't signed, or else we would not have known about this occasion, which is very grateful of you. But the letter is very confusing, even with two college degrees, even to all my neighbors, so I ask, we each had different understandings of what was going on. So in my understanding, if you add more homes by increasing the number of homes that can be put per lot, you're increasing the number of potential Airbnbs, unless somehow you're capping that, which wasn't clear to me. Because people could move in there full-time and rent those houses as well, so you've now drastically increased the problem. So I think that's all I have to say. I just really moved here from Southern New York to the idea of coming to Adrona Park, which I was, under the impression had zoning in effect that would limit the amount of houses, and I had no clue that that zoning could be changed to a later date.
Thank you. Next is Ed Fink, followed by Michael Takach.
Hello. Thanks, Sue Ellen, to making me aware of this. I wasn't paying attention.
Speak into the microphone. Thank you.
I like the idea of not having unhosed short-term rentals in Deerwood, where we live, and it's now our sole residence. I don't understand why you need to change the zoning and the lot density size. It's just going to create more people in an area that all of us like it for its rural nature, its nice density it is as far as the lot size. There's got to be a different way to skin a cat without changing the lot size and the zoning. In addition, if I'm not mistaken, you know, there's no sanitary sewers out there. So how are you going to have all of these houses, which are going to need septic tanks and leach fields? And I can tell you, having just put in another one last year at our place, that I don't think there'd be the capacity of the smaller lots. Bottom line, good motivation, no unhosed, but don't change the zoning, and there's got to be a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michael Takach, followed by Sean Donovan.
Michael Takach. Michael Takach, just upfront, I'm not for or against STRs, I'm very neutral because we have utilized the previously existing Land Use Code to be able to establish a minimum threshold within Lake Placid, which has been agreed for a long time. But I am very concerned about the proposal and how it's going to limit property rights and protections for almost every resident owner in Lake Placid. I'd like to thank everybody for all the hard work and put this together, I know it's tough. So you've done a great job and invested a lot of time and effort into it. You know, as I drive around Lake Placid every day now, it's an exciting time. Order is developing like crazy. Hotels are changing hands, hotels are being renovated, Main Street upgrades, lots of affordable housing is being constructed. And all these things are a great benefit, especially to travelers, guests, visitors. And that's all really exciting. And while that's all happening, we're proposing to take away serious land rights and protections from every resident owner in Lake Placid. I'm having a hard time figuring out how that's balancing out. Whether you're for STRs or against STRs really isn't germane, I don't think, to the conversation. The proposal is strictly eliminating land use rights from everybody. Everybody is being affected, whether you're an STR owner, an STR opponent, doesn't matter, you're being negatively impacted by this proposal. The upfront conversation was there was 800 STRs and it was an explosion, then it turned out there were 400, now the latest number is 200 or maybe 250. So we're going to all give up some rights and protections because there's potentially 250 properties that could cause a problem. I think maybe, and I'm hearing the same from the Deerwood folks, that the cure in this case may be a little bit worse than disease, we're all going to give up something in order to protect ourselves against a potential problem from 250 out of the 7,000 or some odd properties that we have in town. And I hope the boards have also considered the long-term tax revenue ramifications. When you take away people's property rights, you limit their property value, and as stated...
15 seconds.
...about school enrollment, low-income housing, et cetera, and all those things will be negatively impacted when our property values are down because the tax revenue goes down. So I hope we can keep working to find a proposal that doesn't limit everybody's property rights.
Thank you. Next, Sean Donovan, followed by Tom Broderick.
Well, Tom's all, mine are the best earlier. Thank you.
Next, Tom Broderick, followed by Peter Rowland.
Tom Broderick, House on Delcum Drive. Thank you all. Is there anything harder to deal with in people's homes, right? Whether they live in them or whether they use their bundle of rights as a homeowner to rent it, long-term or short-term? I can't imagine how complex this has been. I've looked at some of your meetings, and I know that you've tried earnestly to fix this. There is a journal of urban economics study on short-term rentals in the Hudson Market, looked at Los Angeles, and looked at 18 of 88 counties that get restricted. So there are four takeaways. First, they do work. It does convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals, so it does have an impact in that way. The exception being in tourist neighborhoods, a town where tourism is really big. They have the largest impact on residents and home values, et cetera. So the big takeaway was, in areas where they restricted short-term rentals, property values themselves dropped by 11%. Listing values dropped by 30%. And more importantly, the people most impacted were locals who use short-term rentals or rentals in general to subsidize their income so they could stay where they were. What I would like you to do is consider that we have to be cautious of doing something that will impact people who don't really think they're involved in this. So all of the areas where you're going to restrict short-term rentals, they'll be impacted with their home values dropping. So retirees aren't looking at short-term rentals who live in those areas as they're So retirees who aren't looking at short-term rentals, who live in those areas as they're about to cash in on the equity of their home, could see that severely drop. And especially now with the economy and the way it is, that could be even more pronounced. Secondly, we have to be cautious about impacting those bundle of rights, right? There is no fundamental difference between renting your house 365 days or 120 days. But yes, that's what we sell. So we've got to be careful of that. I don't think the town should expose itself to potential litigation for those reasons. The third takeaway is in the areas where there are unrestricted or unlimited short-term rentals, what we're effectively doing is taking any income for short-term rentals and moving it out of the community. Right now hedge funds are buying trailer park homes. And they're buying houses to turn into short-term rentals. So if you create unlimited in a district, it's more than likely that those homes' values will rise. So you're going to have some areas in town where the value of the homes are going to drop, mostly affecting people who are local.
30 seconds.
Other health values going up. And that money and those rentals last in the community. It's difficult. You're doing a great job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Peter Rowland, followed by Jonathan Esper.
For the record, my name is Peter Rowland. I live at 127 Hillcrest Avenue. And as, with the exception of Tom Broderick, I'm a Village person. Not to be confused with the Village people, but lots of people from Deerwood here. I too would like to thank you for continuing the work on this issue and especially the land use code people. I know how hard they worked on that. This is difficult. And everyone, every, nearly every municipality in the country is struggling with this. The land use code regulations that were enacted in 2020 were a necessary first step. Those regulations dealt mainly with health, safety, parking, and nuisance issues. And now is the time to codify where STR should or should not be permitted. As a resort community, we have always had a relationship with seasonal homeowners and visitors. Local people have also rented out rooms or their whole houses for periods of time in order to afford taxes and upkeep on their properties. What's changed, and this is significant change, is the nature of land use where residential properties are being operated as defective businesses in residential districts that have been specifically zoned for single or two-family dwellings. As homeowners on Hillcrest Avenue, since 1984, we've had a front row seat for this. We've had a front row seat to see the effects this type of use has on our neighborhood. Beyond the nuisance issues, the parking and noise, vacation rentals have driven up the selling prices and assessments of houses in many residential areas and have made them unaffordable for local people. The owners that are flipping these investment properties, the rental history gets used as a unique selling point. And this has driven the cost of these properties beyond the reach of the middle class that traditionally lived in these neighborhoods. As we all know, one of the biggest problems facing our community is the lack of affordable housing. And the vacation rental market is a significant contributor to this. The additional fact that a number of what had been long-term rentals have been converted to short-term rentals is also increasing the shortage of affordable housing. And we should all be concerned about that. This is a social issue. When shopkeepers and healthcare professionals and schoolteachers and other residents that make up a community can no longer to live, afford to live in that community, that community is in danger of losing its soul. The people that are most affected by these trends are those least likely to show up for something like this and speak.
30 seconds.
Or to defy public comment. Those are the locals with unmet housing needs and commuters that would like to live in Lake Placid but can't afford to. We need to keep them in mind. They aren't here tonight. And they are the silent majority. Short-term rentals are a popular lodging option. They'll be requested by current prospective visitors. Our challenge is to find a balance between accommodating visitors and a sustainable community of folks that live, work, volunteer, and raise families in a place that we love and care for.
Thank you.
We support the land use code regulations as proposed and in particular, not allow unhosed SDRs in residential districts.
Your time is up, Peter.
Unless others with existing permits. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Jonathan Esper, followed by Chris Grant.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Esper. A couple of questions about posted vacation rentals. Specifically, I wondered why you exclude property managers or a long-term tenant from living in the property and acting as the host, and why it has to be the legal property owner? That doesn't make sense from a housing point of view if you say that there's lack of affordable housing. Well, I have, you know, an owner's apartment section of the house that could be rented out for a budget price and somebody can afford to live there with an agreement that they keep an eye on renters while myself as homeowner is off property somewhere else in other residences. The second question I have is what your policy is on ADUs, accessory dwelling units? Like, let's say there's an apartment above a garage, and is that okay if an owner or property manager lives there and rents out the whole, the main part of the house, as long as it's on a single property? Or if the owner has to live in the same structure, like the same heated shell of a structure? Final question I have is if all those 5% short-term rental fees, if some of that could go to the town to support the fire or other volunteer services, instead of all of it going to Roost and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on surveys and marketing surveys? It feels like a lot of that money just gets drained away to less causes that are not really beneficial to, you know, the services that the STR is actually relying on. So I wish there was a better correlation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chris, I believe, Grant, followed by Nina Armstrong.
Hello, Chris Grant here. And thank you, first off, for all of your service. I'm sure as much fun as it looks like to all of us, there's probably difficult times also in what you're doing. I'm going to go off on a slight tangent here that I would, first off, like to say that short-term rentals is what brought me to the community back in 2001. The house that I bought was a short-term rental house and we were able to afford it. And we utilized it for about five years before I moved my family here in 2006. And it was the only opportunity that I had, certainly, to come to the town. And we still do rent it out on occasion. I see a much bigger problem with short-term rentals and, of course, lack of affordable housing. I think these are all negative byproducts of what I would call hyper-tourism in the town. You know, with Roost and everybody, everybody's like, rah 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 tourism. One thing I think about is back when I started coming here in 2001, it was a quaint town. Now, I don't want to be here in the summertime. There's just so much going on and it's so busy and it's so crowded. I'm happy to be able to talk or able to rent my house out so that I can get the heck out of town. You know, everybody talks that way, you know, Iron Man, this stuff, that stuff, let's get out of town. And then we have the opportunity to rent the house out at that point. And I see hotels expanding, hotels bringing in more low-paying jobs, workforce housing problems. Where are these people coming from? Where are they going to live? Sure, we got to bus them in from alone because we've got hotels coming out of our ears and expanding those. I think that on top of that, the hotels need to become more competitive with short-term housing. And then I think another of the hugest problem that I see is the absolute lack of enforcement. I'm in Beach Hill Circle where we've got a number of houses and there's never been a problem. You know, we've got great people renting to families, families coming down, spending money, but there's zero enforcement from what I can hear in all of these different areas. And if we would just enforce, you've got a neighbor and they're having a party, figure out how to enforce, no pardons. I mean, if you've got people driving up and down your street at 75 miles an hour, you call the cops and they stop them from driving. And from what I can see and hear, you guys have figured out absolutely nothing to do for enforcement.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nina Armstrong, followed by Daniel Cash.
Hi, I'm Nina and I live in the Hillcrest neighborhood. I first want to thank all my Deerwood community members for coming out and speaking. Unhosted short-term rentals do not belong in the residential neighborhoods or the rural countryside. I was lucky to grow up in Lake Placid, attend school here, and graduate among a class of 60 students. Since being back in town after college, I've learned that classes struggle to reach 30 students and sports teams have had to combine with neighboring towns. We are losing our community, which is the heart of Lake Placid. I'm currently an active member of the community, working and volunteering for local organizations. And it is my goal after attending medical school to move back to Lake Placid to live here and work here full-time. This current proposal doesn't do much to restore the community. And what I mean by community includes welcoming newcomers to live here, work here, and put their children in school here full-time. The Village proposal is better than the Town's. It recognizes that short-term rentals do not belong in residential neighborhoods. I'd urge the Village to reconsider lifetime permits. The Town proposal with the expansion of unhosed short-term rentals, I fear, will only further erode the backbone of the community. I feel it is unfair to cap posted rentals as they are our full-time neighbors. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Next, Daniel Cash, followed by Jay Rand.
Hey, Rick. It's nice to see you from the side of the table. Hello, my name is Daniel Cash. I'm a resident of Nordelebit. Couple of things I think would be some considerations that you should think about is the old military corridor with the frontage lots. That's where our schools are. It's where a lot of our community has moved as they have been, as the, you know, community has expanded outside of the village proper. So I think that maybe tightening up that corridor with restrictions and to keep it more residential would be a good idea. I also would like to thank you for your hard work on this matter. I know that it's not easy, making everyone happy, or at least 50% happy, 50% would be good, right? I think that we're all very happy that we are close to landing the plane on this. Both short-term owner, short-term rental owners and residents alike would like some stability moving forward. And I thank you for trying to provide that. I do think, too, one consideration, and I did read it a lot, I'm not real good with the legal documents. So if it's in there, I apologize for being redundant. But I think capping the total number of permits issued for unhosed short-term rentals would be good and base that on our housing stock. That way, when we do expand the housing stock, we can accommodate more short-term rentals. But we don't allow those short-term rentals to take over a larger percentage than we're comfortable with in regards to keeping our land use whole. Thank you very much for your time and your service, Torque.
Thank you. And next is Jay Rand.
Hi, everybody. Jay Rand, 141 Deerwood Hills. And I didn't prepare a speech, so I don't think I'll be over three minutes. But it's great to see everybody. And I also want to thank everybody for your hard work on this. I know it's been, it's been a long time. I'm here basically, I got a letter from someone that just explained that Deerwood Hills is possibly going to have this designation change from rural countryside to town residential. And I just, I can't understand why we would consider doing that. I've been there for 45 years. I, you know, once in a while we hear someone that we have a little bit of noise up there, but it's really been controlled by Officer Mike Fortselli and his crew. And first of all, I guess the concern from posted to unhosed or vice versa is basically so that if anybody, they'd have to be there for 184 days and have permanent residency, correct? And if you divide that land up, which it seems like if it's reduced to 5 tenths of an acre versus one acre, first of all, I think, I heard this before, I think that from Mr. Flink, that, you know, there would be possibly problems with septic and water. And I think everybody up there has had that problem. And it's, it's just unheard of to try and reduce 5 tenths down to 5 tenths of an acre where people could subdivide their land. Ultimately, I've also heard that through the APA, there's a covenant that the land can't be divided. So I don't, I really don't see the sense of why it would be changed. So as a 45-year resident, I would just like to say I hope it stays rural countryside because I just can't see the reason, the rationale, why it would be changed. So that's all I have to say. And thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Jay was the last name on my list, except for the one person whose name we couldn't decide. Okay, please step up and state your name.
I'm Carlo Ginnabaugh. I'm really out of my comfort zone right now. This is not my place. I'm here really because of Deerwood Hills, which is where I live and my family in my community. And I don't understand what has changed that would, that would initiate a change for what's been set forth. It seems like everything is maintained. There's still farms that you drive into. The community's the same. So what, what is different that makes you want to change it? It doesn't make any sense. The most frustrating part, I guess, is that I know six of you here and all we have are questions and you can't answer them. So that doesn't do anything for us. Derek, it sounded like you've already made the decision. It sounded like we're just going to listen and take it into consideration, but no one's going to answer our questions, our concerns. And that's really upsetting. I was your neighbor for a long, long time. You know the work I put in to that house I lived at. And I just went there yesterday. It's empty. It doesn't look good to me at all. I mean, it's stacked on top of stacks there. They're sandwiched in. If that's going to happen at Deerwood, that's a disaster. And I don't know what the plans are, but it doesn't look good to me. So I hope you guys make some more calls.
Thank you. That is the end of my in-person list. If anyone wants to raise their hand electronically, we can, oh, one, one more person. Hold that thought, but you can start raising your hands electronically if you would like to speak after this person.
I don't have a mic. Can you just let them know that the chat is not being recorded? So if they comment in the chat, it's not a public comment.
Okay. I did ask that person to, Karen Delaney. Karen, thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Karen, move up to the microphone, please. Oh, hello. I just want to thank everybody listening here at the great panel here for helping to make, keep, as Tom said, yeah, make Lake Placid great again, keep it great. This is such a big national issue. But one thing I don't quite understand is the hosted versus unhosed. And I don't know if you have to live there or some of that's going to be a little bit tricky to enforce, I think. But I think it's a great idea. Or can it just be residents? Can residents have any, if somebody lives on the street? And these are the ideas that I'm thinking, that they might be, should be able to get a house on the street and be able to rent it. I don't know. I don't know if that can be the case. Or a business. Does a business mean that you're hosted? It might not be right in your business, but it might be right next door or above. Is that enough if you own the business and you rent like apartment above, but you don't live there as that host? These are just things that I'm thinking about. But I do agree, it does have to be, you have to stop people from buying up all the available property. And I do get frustrated when I read real estate listings and you hardly see any now about saying good for a family home. They say great potential for rentals. And I think that, that mentality has to die. I don't know if there could be, could be different levels. Can there sometimes be seasonal short-term rental permits? I know some people that leave for the winter, then they come here. I mean, you know, they, they only come for the summer and want to rent it all winter to be long-term or short-term. And I mean, you know, they just, they only come for the summer and want to rent it all winter to be long-term. Yet that could be a different category. Or maybe a little less than $1,000. And is there really a talk of it going up in price? A little, right? If it's on the upper price range, $1,000 or... I know there's different levels. I forget them now. But anyway, let's see what other ideas I have. Well, I haven't heard it yet, but somebody told me there was something for you to do. NCPR, was it yesterday, level four?
30 seconds left.
But we didn't get a chance to... Working and hiking different channels. But thank you, and I hope it works out great for everybody who called. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So I see one person with their hand physically raised. Cheryl is the name. If you could also share your last name, please. Cheryl, you can speak.
Yes, sure. My name is Cheryl Grevich. I just have a short note that I wrote. I currently have a permit and own a property in the Whiteface Club Resort, and I'm part of an affiliation agreement. I understand I will have unlimited rentals, which makes me very happy. But as far as transfer of title of ownership, either transferring it to my son or sale, the new owner can buy into the affiliation agreement, but will be put on a waitlist for a permit, and this could take years. So I propose affiliated properties at the Whiteface Club be treated the same, excuse me, as HOA properties and not subject to a waitlist. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Tina Law has her hand raised. If you could, you could go ahead. Let me unmute you, then you can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, great. Can you hear me?
That Tina?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. This is Tina Law. I'm here with Elaine Mooney. We are homeowners of 71 Quail Lane in Deerwood Hills. We've owned it for the last 18 years. We are not residents of Lake Placid as of yet. We do want to spend a lot more time. I grew up in the area. Looking forward to coming back and spending time. Our first concern with, with this discussion and the short-term rental really is the lack of transparency. We didn't hear about this, and thank you to the person who sent the letter because not hearing or getting information, the decision not to inform the homeowners in Deerwood of a potential amendment that could drastically change the neighborhood gives a perception of a hidden agenda. Now, we're, we live in Nantucket, Massachusetts, and unfortunately, as I can tell you from our experience, we have seen this happen. We have, in Nantucket here, we have a tour, we have tourism like Lake Placid. Also, we have a 1.2-plus billion-dollar real estate industry. It's really hard to believe, coming where we've come from, and I've lived here for 32 years, and Elaine's a seventh-generation Nantucketer, it's really hard to believe that a real estate company or developer is not behind pushing zoning change. And I feel like the residents in Deerwood, in Lake, in Lake Placid itself should be really aware of this. We wonder if anybody on the board proposing the change has any connection with the latter. We've seen this happen so many times, and we should be very concerned and cautious. Our second concern is the increase in buildable lots. And I can only, again, tell you from our experience, in the 1990s, we were told here on Nantucket there were not going to be any more building, buildable lots. Of course, there were properties that opened up because of family inheritance, but the majority of lots were created by changing zoning laws. And the result was this: an increase of density of houses, noise, excessive building and landscaping, an increase in traffic. Another area besides Deerwood Hills to think about traffic is river road. One of the biggest training roads I've ever seen in my life. There was a strain on resources such as water and septic. You have a loss of privacy, a loss of neighborhoods, and a loss of community. We have witnessed that even with the increase of buildable lots here in Nantucket, it did not mean locals were getting housing. Just the opposite. Locals were and still are being priced out of this area, and it's happening in Lake Placid right now. Houses built provide rental income from the homeowner. However, the majority of the lots are going to be purchased by out-of-state residents or downstate residents. This is what's happening, and it'd be devastating to Deerwood Hills. So we would like it noted that, you know, Nantucket and Lake Placid, Deerwood Hills, not exactly the same, but we're both tourist areas. And we also have a huge real estate industry happening. And Lake Placid is just about 25 years behind what we've already been experiencing. We've already been through this, and now we have big corporations buying residential homes. We would like it noted that we're against any change to zoning in Deerwood Hills. And we would like an amendment made, maybe to propose the short-term rental law to include hosting rentals in rural areas and rural countryside with no change.
Your time is up.
On zoning. Thank you.
Next, Mike Grippo.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. So my, my name is Mike Grippo. I have a home in the Whiteface Club Resort, and I live on 10 Overlook Way. We purchased the home in October of 2020. We currently do not have a rental permit. So I just appreciate the opportunity to ask a quick question for your consideration. It's, it's really kind of a follow-up from Cheryl's prior question, who is, he's also a resident of the Whiteface Club. So as you're probably aware, the Whiteface Club Resort, I believe, is an affiliated property. It's not a formal homeowners association. And I'm sure you're also aware that the Whiteface Club is almost entirely comprised of second homeowners. It really is an ideal location for unhosted short-term rentals for a variety of reasons that I'm not going to go into. But my quick question for your consideration is, would you consider treating or designated affiliated properties like the Whiteface Club to enable short-term rentals? So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I see one more hand raised online. Jillian Locke.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So first, I just want to thank the board. Both boards, I know, have worked very hard over the course of, you know, some for years with the Land Use Code Committee as well. And I just commend you all for the efforts that have been made. But while, why I'm here tonight speaking is to discuss specifically hosted rentals. And basically, I'm posing to the board to reconsider the premise of a waitlist for hosted rental permits in both the village and in residential areas of Lake Placid. I'm in my 20s, and by the grace of God, I was able to purchase a home up on Averyville this past July, and I'm so proud of it. The home that I purchased is a classified as a 215. So it's a single-family home with an accessory dwelling, which is a full apartment. And for me, to be able to afford this home, rentals would make a huge difference. There's no way in hiding that short-term rentals do provide income to the homeowners. And hosted rental permits are really a small piece of the pie that full-time residents get to have in this shared space of STRs in our community. The thought, quite frankly, of having to be on a waitlist has kept me up many nights because it would be very, a different set of circumstances for me if I was told that I wasn't able to rent short-term. And for those that pose, okay, well, you know what? You can be the solution to long-term rentals in our community. I just want to say I have a full-time job, and I am not in a position to be a full-time landlord. Shorter-duration stays are incredibly appealing to a young person like myself who is able to, at this point in time, stay in my apartment and hopefully one day be able to, you know, change that set of circumstances. But as of now, my only point for the board is to potentially reconsider the thought of a waitlist for hosted rental permits in our community. Thank you all. I appreciate all your times, and I look forward to seeing your take on all of our comments in the coming days and weeks.
Thank you. One more online hand. Jeffrey Ward.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeffrey Ward. I have a property on Deerwood Hills. I was, let me just say, I thank the board for their work. I know there's a lot of moving parts to what you guys are doing up there. However, I, I, as a homeowner, a property owner there, I knew nothing about the, the proposal of, of changing the zoning. I'm, I'm very much against changing the zoning. We bought and built our, on our property there. We have a beautiful house. The aesthetic value is just, you know, it's priceless. I have great concerns and questions of why we would be changing that, that zoning. I think it's, it's exactly that. It's rural countryside. That's why we all live there, and that's what we enjoy about it. I don't think there's a necessity to change that at all. And I would think that subdividing, buildable lots, once again, you're going to start to detract from the area, the reason that a lot of us purchased our properties there. And purchasing the property there, as it is already a rural countryside property, zone, zoned area, you know, that, you know, when you buy, when you buy a property in that kind of area, you know, you're not, you know, you're not looking for that zoning to be changed if at all possible. And once again, I think all the residents in the, in Deerwood Hills at least, I don't know if we were all notified about all of this. I was only notified by a neighbor, and that's why I couldn't be there in person. But I thank the opportunity, I thank you all for that opportunity to be heard. And once again, I would implore you to reconsider that zoning change. I don't think there's a need for the zoning change. That's my, my great concern here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wants to electronically or, oh, someone raised their hand? Yes. John Granview. Go ahead, John.
Hi, everybody. I'll be quick. I just wanted to say hi and thanks for everybody always doing what you're doing. Basically protecting the town and what's so special about Lake Placid. I've been basically a part-time resident up in Lake Placid for the last about nine years now. And it's where we always want to be. We'll always have a house up there, especially towards retirement. You know, I'm a business owner in terms of separately, I have a fundraising company that works with kids throughout the New York State area. But one thing I could never do was take a vacant house that had been sitting for 12 years and needed about $100,000 renovations when I thought it would be 50, because contractors are coming and going out of town and really kind of, you know, got through the wringer with a lot of contractors. I'm just saying it's very expensive to fix a house up. Dramatically increased the property values and quality of look and appeal on my street, and did that because I want this house to be something I'm proud of. But more importantly, I don't understand when it comes to, say, a nuisance house or a party house. That is really a town problem with zoning, where they should be enforcing those. And it is not necessarily a VRBO thing or Airbnb thing. It's just a general thing in general. We should be covering that as a town and saying, whenever we have a party house, we need to have some laws that allow it to be shut down. Secondly, I don't understand why we need to treat vacation rentals differently than, say, a bed and breakfast. They should be applying for, in a residential area, a bed and breakfast permit or make it part of that. And they can choose to be a part of the town and have a permit if it's a business. If it's a part-time resident, and I'm going to stress this very strongly, if it's a part-time resident or a full-time resident, they care very dearly about their neighbors because they want to be there. And I am that way. I love my neighbors, and I want them always to be happy. And I'm very protective about who I rent to when I occasionally rent. And I'm only using that really to fix up the house and cover it until I can be up there more often. And that's how most people are with their vacation rentals. We need to get rid of, and I'm, I'm telling you right now, I'm kind of my own evil. I don't agree with people having a full-time business in a residential area as a vacation rental where they don't live there ever. Those are usually the bad apples that cause a lot of this strain. In terms of the property values, that's so many different issues that are not really involved in this. Property values have so many different avenues as to why we're increasing. This is a small piece of that pie. But anyways, thanks again for everything you guys are trying to do. I know you're trying to protect the town and make it great. So thanks for letting me be a part of this and be a part of your town.
Thank you. Anyone else online wants to electronically or physically raise their hand? I got one more name from Lori. Sonia Barney, you'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Sonia Barney, and I just would like the board to maybe reconsider capping hosted Airbnbs. I think like if you're a resident, you live here and you have a hosted Airbnb, you're going to be protective of your property and you're going to care about your neighbors. And I think that it is a way for us to have income coming in that helps generate us to be able to live and afford and live here. And I think that's fair to all residents who live in Lake Placid. And I don't think you should have to be on a waitlist because truthfully, you'll never get... I mean, people will keep their Airbnbs forever, so waitlist is pretty much meaning you're off the grid. You don't get to have your opportunities to bring that income in. So I guess I just wish you'd reconsider that.
I do have one more electronic hand raised. JM, you could speak if you please give us your full name.
Jen Mcrote.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The boards have been generous and kind with their time and expertise, and I thank you for all of that. I had a consideration. I support the enforcement side of things. But that alone doesn't help increase the full-time population there and invite more people to stay. And part of, I would suggest using the fees for is incentives to bring people in to live full-time. Other communities do this and give chunks of money, grants, for moving into the locations. And it helps support growing the communities. You may have read about some of these efforts. Portugal does it. Small communities in North Carolina do it. They provide tens of thousands of dollars to people to move into their community. And I would love to see some of the fees collected going towards increasing the local population to help long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. I was given one more in-person name. Tim Reynolds has reconsidered and will be speaking.
Hi, Tim Reynolds, North Elmer resident. I was mentioning earlier that the zoning map being used is from 2011. And as you know, there was the Land Use Code Committee, all the work they did in the maps, the surveys, and the maps that were created from that. It seems like there's a big disconnect with what that committee recommended and what has taken place with the, you know, different areas where STRs can and can't be. Seems like there's a big disconnect there. It's unfortunate tonight that we can't, like, just talk about that. Maybe there's a reason why that was done, but I just like to point out, it doesn't seem, it seems like there's a big disconnect between those, the efforts of that group and the maps over created versus, you know, the zoning area and what's being designated as STRs in those different areas. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Oh, looks like one more online. KM, if you could state your full name, please.
Yeah, so this is Kayla Morganti. I, my husband and I purchased a small, very small plot of land in, right in the village last year, and we're looking to build something on it. And we are following up with a gentleman that said, you know, we plan to live there for a certain portion of the year, but probably not what would constitute a hosted long-term rental. We come from Saratoga. We are very well-versed in the short-term rental market. Just having one be two doors down from our house. So we sympathize with sort of both sides here. What I would maybe consider is just, as the gentleman prior said, the folks that will live here at least some portion, I'm not sure exactly what constitutes hosted, but the, the folks that will live there, maybe some portion, will definitely care quite a bit about their home, about their neighbors, and that's kind of our plan. We may not be able to build in town, quite honestly, if we are not able to have some sort of income coming in. So we plan to try and create a long-term rental. So I would also echo the sentiments of incentivizing for long-term rentals because property is expensive, as everyone knows, and I think it's really tough to be any type of resident in Lake Placid right now. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is all, unless anyone... I believe that is all, unless anyone else online or in-person wants to speak. If you'd like to come up to the mic and state your name, please.
I spoke already. My whole time, I wanted to add to that.
That's up to the board.
I think it's one comment per person. But you break comments for another three days. How about this? Good.
Come on up and state your name, please.
I'm Bronwyn Seale. I've lived in Deerwood, I'm the grandma of Deerwood, I guess. My ex-husband and I were the first people who ever lived there. At that time, it was just a dirt road, and you'd look out the window and a car went by because you'd say, oh, there's a car. We had a Saab Bernard, we would sleep in a row, and the cars would just drive around. Didn't matter. I've seen a lot of changes, and I would say mainly for the, you know, it's fine. It's absolutely fine. But I am truly devastated by the idea that we would be changed from a rural district to a residential district. True. And I don't understand, I know you're not answering questions, but since we didn't even know about this, I'm wondering if all of a sudden I'll read in a newspaper, oh, Deerwood Hills has been changed. You know, I, I don't understand. We need this communication. And it comes to, you know, signing a petition or whatever else, I heard what Sue Ellen said, I know, basically, I can speak for everybody in Deerwood. We do not want to be changed from this rural designation to residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, one more online, MW, if you could state your full name, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Michael Wyler, and I'm a vacation owner, homeowner in Lake, in the Lake Placid Village area. And one of the things I do want to kind of point, call out and ask, to ask the board to kind of potentially reconsider on some of these points, and before I do that, first of all, I want to thank you all for all the hard work that you guys have been putting into this. I know that there is no simple answer to all of this, but one of the first things that I want to make sure that you guys may potentially reconsider is in terms of ownership, right? As a vocational rental, as a vacation homeowner, I want to be able to pass down my home to my kids, right? And that shouldn't be classified as, as a change of ownership, right? That's, that's next of kin, right? If something happens to me and my, and my spouse, right, my kids should be entitled to the same land code use rights that I, that I originally, with my wife, purchased, right, when we first got the home. That's one. Second, I do have a concern with terms of the privacy with my address being posted on the public website, right, stating that my permit, permit information, and which will be easily obtainable to anyone who may potentially want to kind of scout out the homes, take a look when they're, they are empty, right, and be able to ransack them, right? So that's something that I feel the board should consider potentially maybe removing that and have some sort of policy in place where if the neighbor is inquiring about whether or not the short-term rental next door is a legitimate STR or not, that they have a means of doing so. The third point is that, you know, the 90-day cap, that's something else that you guys should consider removing, right, or potentially aligning with the village, the town, right? There, there is no real rhyme or reason in terms of what the village has stated and why that 90-day cap was imposed initially. We've asked repeatedly in terms of the board to specify the reasons. None was provided. And I totally understand from a, from perspective of limiting the attractiveness of having the short-term rentals as a business, right? But that's, that's one other point that you guys should consider potentially aligning with what the town has. The other point I also want to make is, there's folks out there that currently on more, that have not been able to obtain a short-term rental permit due to the moratorium that you guys have put in place, right? And the reason is that you guys are not allowing any additional permits to be issued to the owners, those owners. So the, the real estate agents have sold those homes with the preconceived notions that these homes could be rented out, so that's something that you guys should consider and honor, honor those people that currently are waiting for those permits. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more hands raised here. I will say that there are three comments in the chat box. Those are not part of the record, so if John on Grandview, Joe, or Bruce Burger want to make their comments, you are still welcome to do so, but the chat will not become part of the record, or you can email them to either clerk. Is there anyone else present here who wants to speak? Anyone online? I think we may be done for the evening, then. Derek?
Thank you, everyone. Listen, I know there's a lot of misgivings on our not responding. This is the format that public hearings always go by. Don't think we didn't hear you tonight. We will be addressing the Deerwood Hills issue. Write down the list. I've recorded everyone that's responded. Is everything said in stone? No, that's why we're having this session. Please have some confidence in us. We've spent numerous hours to try to work both sides of the fence. We'll continue to do that. So thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight, and work with us. We'll work with you. The public hearing will be, this public hearing will be closed, but comments will be accepted until Friday, the end of Business Day, December 2nd.
Yeah, the town is L D U D L E Y at northelma.org, and the village is LP Clerk at villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov. Yes. If you send to either of those, we will share with both boards. Our just needs to close the public hearing, or I'm closing comments as well.
Yep, thank you, Emily. Before I do that, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out. It's really great when we get to see the public, hear the public. It shows that you care. Once again, thank you. And on behalf of the village, I will close the public hearing on our part.
Thank you all.